I call the July 24 regular meeting of council to order. First item on the agenda is introductions of light lead items. We do have one motion that was missed under 7D, street naming. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
She'll move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Edwards, all in favor?
Raise my hand.
Carrie. All right, the next item on the agenda is the reading and adoption of the minutes. A motion that the minutes of the July 5, 2018 special council meeting be adopted as presented or amended. Can I get a mover and a seconder on those?
I'll make that move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing done. I'll call the question, all in favor as presented. Carrie?
Mayor.
Next one is a motion that the minutes of the July 10, 2018 regular council meeting be adopted as presented or amended. Can I get a mover and a seconder on those?
I'll move minutes.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing done. All in favor as presented?
Mayor.
Did you guys raise your hands to say yeah?
Yeah.
That was quick.
I was listening to the morning dose.
Yeah, distracted me as well. All right, the next item is petitions and delegations. We have Mr. Roger Peterson, the unit chief from the B.C. Emergency Health Service, McBride Station, is providing presentation to council regarding continued use of the Public Works Building to train paramedics on various procedures.
May the law?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. I am unit chief for McBride ambulance station 525. Little bit of background, like I've been a paramedic for a long time, so 20 years, 30 years. I've been the unit chief here for probably about 20. Part of my duties involve the crew operations, daily operations. There's times when we may, like if there's an emergency, as far as for a community event, we participate with that. And in a small community, historically speaking, when paramedics become paramedics, as there's some here in this room know, your reward was the job itself. Your reward was being able to go out and help people and know that you did something good. For last two, three years, that has changed. Not the attitude has changed, but the money aspect has changed. And now we have a guaranteed pay in place where even if you don't get a call, you're still paid for our call out. What that translates back to is actually job positions where people can make a living working for a small station. What that means is, for at least for this station, we're in the process of doing job hires. This station maintains two ambulances 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Each ambulance has two paramedics. What that means to comply with WorkSafe and other regulations is we do need to have a substantial number of crew onboard to prevent fatigue and to be safe. Part of the hiring process is we send the new hires to Vancouver for a 10-day timeframe, all expense paid, as a start to become a paramedic. That's a new employee orientation program, and that going to Vancouver has started about two months ago. Before then, we would have people training at Prince George. In addition to that, we pay for their AMR training, and that's another 10-day stint. So, and in addition to that, they also have time on card, all of that's prior to riding ambulances here in town. We supply uniforms from the boots up to the hat. We're normally looking at around $1,400, $1,500 to outfit one person per uniform, so our costs are quite substantial. In the past, the village has been kind enough to allow us to use the Forester Building, the old Forester Building, and for training exercises, and that's helped immensely. The last class was for prospective new hires, where we did a CPR C certification and training for them. We want to have EMR training in town for the new hires. I have eight new hires to go through the program, and instead of shipping to Prince George, where they spend motels in a week and then another week because it's a 10-day timeframe, I was hoping that we'd be able to impose on the village for the right or use of that building. In addition to that, there's probably another three, four times where we would request, if it's available, to do additional training. So that's the, that's my pitch. Any questions of me?
Counsel? Counselor Thompson?
Through the chair, is this training, in addition to training that's been happening at the community hall? There's been an awful lot of ambulance training going on.
It's in addition. The training we've been doing at the community hall is an ongoing training for existing paramedics. Example, one quarter would be death and dying, CPR update, cardiac management. In addition to that, they would also supply to some of the paramedics additional training for airways and death and everything. So it's in addition.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Edwards?
Through the chair. Do you, what's the timeframe? How much of the year do you need it for?
The EMR coming up is 10 days, and anticipated date, like we have five people going through the NEOMA in August, so it's probably not going to be required until the last part of September, 1st of October, and so that would be for a 10-day stint. After that, it would be like when we received new striker cots. Striker cots is your power lift cots, and you were kind enough to allow us to have the use of the building for that training purpose. So it's, as we get equipment, as we get new training, then at that point, I'd be saying, I'd come to you and say, is it okay?
So it'd be a few times a year?
Probably three to four. The EMR course would be the longest timeframe, because that's, and that's, last time we had an EMR course here would be probably 18 years ago, quite a while. The last one that we had, three years ago, so it was in Belmont. I prefer that the people be kept here because they were working here.
Through the chair, how much space do you need? Like, I remember, I took some courses at the, up in the fire hall. What makes that a good place for you doing your training?
Not much bigger than this room right here, because you've got eight people, you've got a bunch of medics laid out, and they're respirators, et cetera, so you have equipment. The key thing is not to have to be able to take it down.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Any other questions, Counselor Edwards?
No, no.
We do have a motion coming up in relation to the letter that you had sent us, which is also on council's agenda for later this evening.
Okay.
So the voting will actually occur at that point in time.
Sure.
But I just wanted to thank you and all the paramedics, and the community paramedics, and the services that you guys provide to us, and to tourists, and some of our outdoor adventure enthusiasts that come here and require your services at some point, so thank you guys for all you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next one is questions from the public and press. We have none. Does that come back to you now? Yep, okay. And we'll move on to unfinished business. So the first one is a report from the working group for the Ancient Cedar Forest Celebration on the September long weekend. They've requested a grant and aid of $250 to provide assistance for Diversified to pay for drivers and fuel costs to transport attendees from Prince George and from McBride to the celebration itself. I'm sure you've all read my report, so can I get a motion to receive my report, providing an update on the Ancient Cedar Forest Celebration in September 2018?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. And any questions or comments on it? Okay. All in favor?
I'll raise my hand.
Carrie. And the next one is a motion that council approve a grant and aid of $250 to assist to Diversified in covering fuel and driver costs to transport attendees to the Ancient Cedar Forest Celebration. A mover and a seconder? Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion?
Counselor Green? Do we have any concept or ideas to how many buses or how many passengers or?
No, we don't, as at this point in time, the city of Prince George has provided their community coordinator, so on tomorrow's call, they're also bringing in another gentleman to work out all of the logistics on it, but the idea is, is that we will be putting out there that we will bus people to the Ancient Cedar Forest through some of the City of Prince George programs, and what that'll do for Diversified is we'll have people register. It will tell us how many are going to attend, how many spaces we need for wheelchairs and walkers, and that kind of thing, and then Diversified will work out the running of the buses to and from Prince George and McBride to the Ancient Cedar Forest. Is generally the plan right now, but it will all be flushed, that part of it will be flushed out on tomorrow's conference call. Counselor Thompson?
Just a conclusion. Are these calls a follow-up to the meeting that we had at the Ancient Forest in Dome Creek? Should I be attending?
Yes, I did note on our last conference call, because I had no members of council present, so I had asked Natasha if, because she arranges all the meetings, if she had contacted all of council, and it seems to, I'd missed the last meeting, so there seems to have decided to smullen the group, and I had asked her to include you guys in all the future calls that are coming up. Minister Bond, I'm sorry, Emily Bond was on the call, and she had said that she wasn't too worried about that, as long as I made sure that the information was communicated to council, and that council, of course, fully participates in the event itself. So that's why I did the report, was it's there for logistical purposes, so you can see where we left off when you guys last talked, because I wasn't there for that one, and where we ended up this time around when I was there and you guys weren't, so that way there's kind of a record of what all's been discussed and what we're doing moving forward. My understanding is Natasha and Peter are deciding as to whether or not they're going to expand the call some more. I have no idea why it changed.
So the short answer is, we don't have to stand by for a call tomorrow?
No, I think she's already sent out, tomorrow's going to be basically on the transportation itself, so this one is being chaired by the community coordinator from the city of Prince George. Then the next one, I'm not sure when it's going to be.
Yeah, I was in the same boat. I was at that meeting, and then I hadn't heard anything more, and then I, and then I heard, I saw your report. I was wondering if there was some reason why we would be, why we had.
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know why it switched.
It's not that I'm looking for extra work, so I'm fine with that, but it's, anyway, it would just seem odd.
Yes, it did seem kind of odd to me as well. I don't, I can put forward to Natasha and Peter that council would like to be included, and then if you guys can attend, you can attend, if that's what council wishes. I just thought everybody was busy working in the beginning, so I wasn't too sure if you just couldn't make the call or not.
Yeah, I haven't participated in any of them, so I'm depending on my colleagues here to manage that, but I do intend on attending, so.
Okay, I'll ask Natasha then to make sure that you guys are included in the call, and then if you can attend, you can attend, and if you can't, and I'll just keep writing the reports for those who can't attend.
That's probably the best way to do it.
Okay.
One's in.
Okay. Does that answer everything, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the question, then. All in favor? Carrie? Next item on the agenda is the rural dividend grant program. It's, let me see here, a revised motion for application purposes to the, for the airport development strategy. The old motion that we passed on June 12 that council support a grant application to the rural dividend, fifth intake project development stream for the McBride Airport Charlie Lake Field Development Plan. The motion now, the revised motion requested reads, motion that council authorize the submission of an application to the B.C. Rural Dividend Program for the McBride Charlie Lake Airport Development Strategy, and that council support this project through its duration. So can I get a mover and a seconder on that, and then we'll turn it over to CIO for update?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, just that as we worked through the grant application, I noticed that our resolution should be a little bit more defined.
Counselor, any questions of the CIO? Counselor Edwards?
Through the chair, is there a, is there a study we're going to do of the airport as a, and how we're going to be dealing with the airport going forward?
That's correct. It'll be like a strategic.
A strategic?
Yeah, a development strategy. So it'll have to do with what type of infrastructure is recommended for future.
What services we will provide.
Exactly, there'll be extensive community consultation with that.
Excellent, yeah.
Is the airport included in the asset management planning as well?
The asset planning right now is, basically, we have 10,000, we have the funds to do our own education and in-house policy development, and then the building assessment does not include the airport.
Okay.
It just includes our building infrastructure at this time.
Any other questions, Counsel? Counselor Thompson?
Just a point of clarification through the chair. Are we rescinding the previous motion and passing it new in, or?
That's a good question. It's a good technical question. We could rescind the previous motion.
I think you could just revise the motion as you have it written as well.
Yeah, there's not that much of a, all we're doing basically is adding that council support this project through its duration. I think it's kind of implied in the, in the previous motion anyways, when you're giving administration the, you know, to support a grant application.
I don't think technically it hangs it up at all, Counselor Thompson.
Sorry, my Robert's rules aren't, I don't think what we need to do, but.
If.
Counselor Edwards?
If you leave the old motion on the books, it doesn't change anything. This doesn't, this doesn't change that motion. There's nothing in this motion that reverses that motion.
No.
It just adds a phrase.
So it's just expanding it?
So it's just, it's untidy, but it's, I don't think it changes the meaning of anything.
I don't think you have to, it's, I don't think it would be a requirement that you have to rescind the one in order to do the other one. I think a revised one.
We could do it in any order. We could rescind them now, after this one.
We could do that as well, yeah, if council prefers to do that, that's fine with me. What's your preference?
Me?
What's your preference?
I'm just, I'm fine with passing this motion.
Okay. Counselor Green?
Yeah, I'm fine with just passing it.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I'm fine. It really doesn't change the intent of the original motion.
I think if it changed the intent, then we would be required to rescind and then redo, but I think in this case, it's just a bit of a revision, so I think it's okay to proceed. Okay. So any further discussion on it? I'll call the question, then. All in favor?
In favor.
Carrie. All right, the next one is the same type of thing from the rural dividend grant program for the McBride Tourism Master Plan. Administration is requesting revised motion for application purposes. The previous motion on June 12 was motion that council approve the application to the rural dividend grant program for a tourism development strategy that supports the village's economic development action plan and council's strategic goals. The revised motion reads that council authorize the submission of the application to the B.C. Rural Dividend Program for the McBride Tourism Master Plan Project, providing financial support to a maximum of $23,000, 50% cash and 50% in-kind, and that council support this project through its duration. A mover and a seconder, please.
I'll with that, and then I have a question.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, at the time of the application, we wanted to come to council and make sure that we had approval to be able to actually apply. Since then, we've actually been able to have time to do some research and talk with a tourist strategist, and put together a strategic, you know, a strategic plan that is part of our application, and have a budget attached to that. So at the time, we didn't have the budget, and of course, the, just in researching the grant application, they'd like the resolution to say that council supports this project through its duration, even though the previous motion does imply that.
Thank you. Counselor Ruby, you have a question?
I do, through the chair to the CIO. Could you just kind of remind me what we're thinking the in-kind is going to be?
The in-kind is.
Did you hear that?
The in-kind is usually staff time, our facility usage, if council participates, their wages, you know, all of our wages and benefits, and facility, use of facilities, and any promotional products that we use, paper, you know, office supplies.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Thompson?
Just a point, in this particular case, I would suggest that at some point, we rescind the previous one, because this one talks more specifically about dollars and specific contributions.
Okay, that's a good idea. Fair enough. Counselor Green?
I make a motion that, our current motion.
We have a current motion on the floor, so we have to deal with this motion.
But I would like to postpone our current motion and.
So a motion to postpone?
Yes, and then I would like to make a second motion to rescind our previous motion of June 12, resolution 250612.18.
Okay, so motion to postpone, and sorry, I didn't get all the rest of the second motion to.
Second motion to rescind the motion of June 12, resolution number 250612.18.
18. I need a seconder on a motion to postpone?
I'll second that.
I've got Counselor Edwards seconding that, so all in favor of postponing?
Just a point of order.
What's that?
That it should be a motion to table.
Okay, table's fine.
Because postpone means to another meeting.
So a motion to table. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I'll call the question, then. All in favor on tabling?
Carrie.
Carrie. And then a mover and a seconder on the second motion to rescind the June 2, sorry, June 12, 2018, motion 250612.18.
Carrie made the motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Counselor Edwards on that one? Any discussion on the second motion? No? All in favor? Carrie? And then back to the revised motion as presented. All in favor?
In favor.
Carrie? Let's move on, and then you can see them. All right, so the next one is regarding the special rural dividend funding. Administration has previously received an approval for upgrades to the pull-out signs. At the June 12 regular meeting, administration has received designs for the pull-outs. They are on page 24 and 25 of your agenda package. Basically, with the graphic design, the recommendation is to change the red welcome to sky blue. Administration agrees with the change, and the sky blue is a good enhancement of these signs. So motion, the motion reads that council approve the enhancements to the pull-out signs and change the welcome from sky, to sky blue from red.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I've got my hand up.
Okay. Counselor Ruby?
I'm going to be honest with you, I think the red ties in with the red at the bottom, and I like the red better. The two reds, the welcome in red and the visit McBride B.C. in red, I think it ties the two together.
Okay.
That's just what you said, sweet.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Visually, I have to agree with Counselor Ruby. It's, it just brings, you see the whole sign at once, whereas with the blue at the top, I'm all over the place with looking at it. But that's my own visual perceptions here.
Okay. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Edwards, do you have your hand up as well?
I did not.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
I like the blue. I just have a question about the visit McBride.ca. We currently have three websites listed, and is this the decided upon website that we're going to link our people to?
It is. We've been working with other stakeholders in the community, Ms. Thompson, and, sorry, a few Wheeler, getting to know everyone, and the visitor center, and there's been a lot of confusion, having the three different websites, and this is the one of choice, that everything will link through that, and it's one of the reasons why we wanted to change, or why it was recommended from the graphic designer to change to the blue from the red, so that the visit McBride.ca was a little bit more noticeable.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Thompson?
Just a further question through the chair. So this is the website managed by the Chamber of Commerce. Do we have a long-term commitment that they will continue to keep that up to date?
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah.
No further questions, Your Honor? Oh, no, wrong place.
Yeah, I'd say so. All right, I'll call the question, then. All in favor? Opposed?
I am.
Would you like your negative vote reported, Counselor Ruby?
No. No, it's not for me. I'd still like the red better.
Okay. Thank you, it's carried. The next one is. The next one is regarding the storm sewer improvement project, Phase 3 recommendation of award. On page 28, you have the reports. So a motion that council receive the report for the storm sewer improvement plan... Sorry. Storm sewer improvement Phase 3 project.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Thank you. And we'll talk after the next one, so we'll just... This is just a receipt of the report. So all in favor of receipts? Carried.
Okay.
And the next one is motion that council approve the award of Phase 3 storm sewer improvements project to NV construction for a total contract price of $838,181.38 and directs administration to work with Radloff Engineering to prepare a notice of acceptance, contract documents, and issued construction drawings. A mover and a seconder? Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'm ready to enter.
Councilor Thompson? Sorry about that, Council Ruby. Do you have your hand up?
I do.
Okay. I'll take you first, and then Councilor Thompson?
Okay. Are we... I guess through the chair and the CEO, are we confident that Radloff has our drawings as they need to be so we don't have any surprises?
Yes. I believe that they do have that in order. We did meet with Bob Radloff, and he has a senior member of his team that's going to be working with us at a reduced cost also.
Okay. So we're very confident this time?
Yes. Yeah.
Good. Lovely. Thank you.
Councilor Thompson?
Through the chair. Just a question with regard to what are the implications of removing the pipe insulation?
We haven't had... And our Public Works Foreman can answer that, too. The other two projects have not had any insulated piping. And I think they just are laying the clay, and the depth of the pipe itself helps to protect it from the cold. And we also are laying insulation down on top and...
I'm not sure with the first two phases if they put the sheets of insulation down, but it's a pre-insulated pipe. And at the start, or I guess the end, by closest to Columbia Street, running towards Main, the sewers in places like that deep, so it is quite shallow. The last three years, we've had issues with sewers freezing, especially behind the Legion. We had to dig one up last year and replace the section. So I think it's because of the shallowness at the ends of the lines is why they went for the insulated pipe. Or that's why they originally put in the insulated pipe. But the phases we've already completed, there's no insulated pipe. And to my... Best of my knowledge, they haven't froze in the last couple of years.
Just follow up. I do note that this winter, the sewer line from the rocks about the community center to the main line had to be dug up, like in the summer.
Yes.
And had to be insulated.
That was one that froze last year. And they didn't use insulated pipe. They used pieces of insulation. So they dug, exposed the whole pipe, and then encased it in flats, square pieces of insulation is how they did it.
Starphone?
Starphone.
So if I just... If I may just one final question. Are there situations on this project where that too might be occurring? Or is it a depth that we don't have to worry?
No. I'd say at the closest end of Columbia Street, that would be occurring. Either the insulated wall pipe or some pieces of insulation put in.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Council Green, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Mr. Radloff stated that if we were gravel, that we would definitely not go without insulation. But he said because of the clay beds, he said the clay provides its own form of insulation. And that was why, he said, in this particular geographical zone, we could do away with the insulated pipe and go with non-insulated because the clay could work as a barrier. That was his explanation to us. Thank you.
The biggest concern, or the biggest cause of the frost penetrating so deeply is the amount of snowpack we have underground. If you've got a good bed of snow, if you add snow, works as a great insulator, then the frost doesn't penetrate as deep. But the last two, three years, we haven't had a lot of snow before we get our heavy frost. And that's why the last two, three years, we then haven't so many issues with freezing.
I think that's the concern. I don't think the major weather events are going to stop. I think they're going to get worse. But if the engineer has come forward and said that the clay lining is going to be good enough to insulate the pipes, then I guess we have to go with that.
So the insulation is removed, is that correct, from the project?
Oh, it's the insulated pipe. There's still insulation.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Probably, okay. Because I have no idea. I... Sorry. I was on vacation, so...
Get your mind back, eh?
All right. I'll call the question then. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. So the next item on the agenda is our reports. This is where the lead item is, the motion comes from my report. So we'll do that as D after we receive the reports. So we have the mayor's report, Councilor Thompson's report, and the finance report for the period ending June 30th. Can I get a motion to receive the reports for information? I'll make the motion. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. And then on the... Correct my motion. This was just missed because I put it at the bottom of my report. I had attended the former Mayor Bonneville's. I couldn't attend his funeral, so I spoke with his family. And we have... We went through a street naming process and lane naming process where we have... I think Mayor Fraser has a street or lane named after him. Tygart Lane is named after a mayor, and Steepway to Park and stuff like that. So in honor of all the work he's done, and I know we don't have a street named after him because I did ask his wife, I wanted to put forward a motion that the next street named in the village of McBride municipal limits be named in honor of Mayor Bonneville. And I'd like to put that forward myself. And I would need a seconder on that for it to be on the floor.
I'll second it to put it on the floor.
Thank you. Discussion? Councilor Thompson?
Through the chair. Do we have a policy on the street naming? Because I know that a number of our streets have specific themes to them as they're going on, like King Street, Queen Street, et cetera. I'm just curious if we have a policy with regard to street naming that we should be consulting before making... To see whether this fits in with the policy.
Yeah. I would have to check the council's policy and to be sure of that. I haven't seen anything, but just in case I've missed something being new. But... And we could just postpone the motion for that to happen.
Any other discussion? Council Green?
Do our lanes have names? I know we have Tygart Lane is named, but is it... Was it the lanes that we were putting forth?
The... We went through sometime between 2008 and '11, somewhere. It was either just before, I think, even, where they... We had to do the name, I believe it was for 911 purposes, maybe Councilor Thompson remembers. And so this lane was named Tygart Lane after Mayor Tygart. And the lane to the lagoon was named after Mayor Fraser. We already had Steepway to Park named after Mayor... Former mayor. And so that's why I put the motion forward, was I felt it was in keeping with the spirit of what had happened before, not thinking about whether or not we actually had an individual policy or procedure in order to do that.
Or previous motion of council. That would be what I would want to research.
Yeah. So I prefer... That way, Councilor Thompson?
Thank you for letting me in again. I have no issues around it. I just want the... I want us to make sure that we are following a policy, if one exists, or past practice, if one exists. And we do also have Kalita Drive or Kalita Street over there between First and Second. So I'm just wanting to have the administration do a look and find out what we have in terms of practice and policy.
I'm not opposed to that. I just would like to see it done. So if we would like to postpone this pending a report or follow-up from the administration, I'm perfectly fine with that. So do you want a motion to postpone?
I think I move a motion to postpone following or until receipt of a report from administration. I'll second the motion to postpone.
Okay. Okay. So I'll call the question on the motion to postpone first, and then we don't have to vote on it, right? All right. So any other comments on the motion to postpone? Okay. I'll call the question then. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. All right. So we'll move on to correspondence requiring action. The first one is a nomination for council recognition of Mike and Flomenio's 60th wedding anniversary, June 11th, 2018. It's on page 45 in your agenda package. Motion reads that council recognize Mike and Flomenio's 60th wedding anniversary and directs administration to send a letter recognizing their milestone event on behalf of council. A mover and a seconder, please?
I'll second it.
You're going to move it, Council Ruby?
Sorry.
Second? Second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Council Edwards? Any discussion? Council Thompson?
Again, I know that there's something in our policies with regard to what we do. And I can't remember exactly what we do. But I know we've had significant anniversaries, et cetera, where we've invited the lucky couple to attend council and receive something.
Right. As per our policy, they have completed the appropriate application, and we would send a letter.
Okay. No cake? You can't have cake?
We'll get you to hand deliver the letter, and that way you can get some cake.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Call the question then. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. The next one is the MIA B.C. voting delegation taking place... Subscribers take place on Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, in Whistler. At Whistler, at this time, the voting delegate for is Council Ruby, and alternate is Mayor Martin, and alternate number two is Council Thompson. Administration is asking if we would like to make any changes to the voting delegate or alternates at this time. If so, a resolution would be required. Does council wish to make any changes? Are you still willing to let your name stand, Council Ruby?
Yes. Yes, I am.
And I would let my name stand as the alternate number one. And Council Thompson, would you be willing to?
Yes.
Okay. So no changes required? Okay. So we'll move on. And the next one is the B.C. Emergency Health Services requesting use of the Public Works Building for training purposes, page 47 on your agenda package. The motion reads that council approve a grant in kind to the B.C. Emergency Health Services under the direction of the McBride's unit chief for the purpose for the use of a portion of the Public Works Building for the EMR course and ongoing training purposes. Can I get a mover? Thank you, Council Ruby. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Council Thompson?
Through the chair. I'm just more questioning the wording, the wording "grant in aid." Because their grant in aid policy really specifies a grant up to $250, and I'm wondering whether this should be worded to provide space in the old forestry building without charge.
This is grant in kind. This is grant in kind.
Yeah, we have. Is that...
I guess that's the terminology. Sorry. I'm used to just that when you're using your own service, your own infrastructure, and there's no cash value attributed to it. I've called it a grant in kind.
Okay. So as long as it's not... I was confirmed because the letter says "grant in aid." I'm fine. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure we weren't confusing ourselves and the public.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'll call the question then. All in favor? Carried. You're good to go. All right. The next one is at UBCM, a meeting with the Minister of Tourism, Arts and Culture, provincial government staff at UBCM. The deadline for the request is July 27th, 2018. Administration is seeking direction from council to confirm topics and related background information. Council Green?
The... With tourism, I know we've discussed different topics, but I think one of the ones that's going to have a major impact on the economic benefits of tourism in McBride is the caribou closures that are being proposed from the federal government. It's just a blanket without any apparent scientific evidence to back up their proposed closure areas. Would be beneficial, I think, to meet with the executor or somebody with the Ministry of Tourism to discuss having the province to lobby to work out something that's not going to have a major impact. And one option would be to have an environmental officer here, a CEO, to monitor the caribou and to make year-by-year recommendations for area closures based on actual migrations of the caribou and the habitat they require, rather than a closure stating, gee, they might be there in 20 years. We better close it all off just in case. And I think we just need to have them put some common sense to the closures rather than a major blanket.
Okay. Do you?
Yeah. Chair through to Council Green. That would not fall under the tourism. We were already discussing with... Have requested a meeting with the Ministry of...
Environment.
Of Environment and also Forestry and Resources regarding the caribou. And that's really great information that you've just indicated there that can be part of the discussion paper when we do have the meeting. I think Ministry of Tourism is... Would be a different topic we should consider.
I guess the closure will impact our trail systems, recreation, hiking, skidooing, anything that's motorized. And that could have a major impact. And I think the more ministries that we lobby to, the better chances we have of being heard that this really does need to be addressed.
I totally agree with what you're saying. Would they do... When we make the request, they actually do assess your topic based on what their ministry actually... Their ministry forum is. And we would get a letter back saying we need to contact the Ministry of Resources or Ministry of Environment with this. Okay. Just not to waste our, you know, our efforts or our time related to tourism.
Council Green? Or Councilor Thompson, sorry?
Council Green. Today, thank you. Through the chair. Perhaps a topic that we might want to address with the tourism people would be the possibility of moving forward with an ancient forest interpretive center at the gateway to the ancient forest here in McBride to attract tourism and make people stop in our town. And how do we work with tourism parks and all of the ministries to make that happen? And how do we work with tourism parks and all of the ministries to make that happen? After all, we are the gateway. Says so on our sign in Greek. Blue? Green.
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 All right. Did you get enough information off of that? Do you need a resolution from, from council on that?
I think that's good. Would you like to have another topic, though? That's just one topic. Do you may want another topic?
I think we're getting down to the late dates here and...
I have to submit up another one by Friday.
I don't have anything else. So we're good with that one then? Okay. All right. We'll move on to 8B for information. We have a bunch of things there in your agenda package from page 49 to 73. So can I get a motion to receive items 8B, A through K for information?
So moved.
So, Council Thompson moving, Council Ruby seconding. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Item F, UBCM input slot for convention forums. Last year at UBCM, we had Council Thompson gave a presentation about rural representation on school boards. And Council Ruby gave a talk on transitional slash graduated assisted living. And I think that a topic we could put forward this year that Council Thompson might do well with is brownfields and how they affect small communities, taxation base, what we need to see changes in assessment and so forth.
Okay.
And I'd be more than willing to strike that conversation.
Okay. Marish was one that I thought of too, was I've been asked a lot at some of the mayor's meetings and stuff about our library museum project and the referendum process and what we all went through. So it might be worthwhile to mention it at the small talk forum for some of those smaller communities that want to upgrade. So that would be one that I would like to put forward too.
Is that the end of the success stories?
That would be under the success stories. You betcha. So that one, does council have any other ones? Okay. So just those two items?
I think it's the chief McBride on the map.
All right. So make note of that and Council Thompson, you'll have your notes prepared, I'm assuming, and for the small talk forum as, as will I?
Yes, I'll share them with council before that time. Is there anything administration needs to do to, I guess you have to inform them and then we have to get permission.
Yeah, we have to bring that forward. As a, as a, we're just seeking input and they will let us know.
I think the submissions have to be done by this Friday as well.
Yeah.
Do they want the talk?
Friday's the line. Email your questions, ideas, and success stories by Friday, July 27th. So that means when you go home tonight, start preparing and then get it to, get it in by the 27th, Council Thompson, they'll do it soon.
I've got a sticky note here.
Okay.
Run it.
I gotta start this thing now. All right. Do we need a motion for that, you think? Do you?
The only thing is just feedback.
Just feedback, okay. Good enough, then, I. So any other comments then? Okay. So I'll call the question on the receipt of the information. All in favor? Carried. All right. So bylaws permits and policies, we have none. And we'll move on to new business. So the first one is for the temporary use permit 201827.000821st Avenue, Todd and Wanda Holmes. A motion that council receive the reports, temporary use permit 2018.27.000 for 821st Avenue. Can I get a mover and a seconder on that one?
Move it, second.
I'll move that.
I've got Council Thompson's moving and Council Edwards seconding. Any discussion? Call the question then. All in favor? Carried.
In favor.
And the next one is that motion that council grant approval for the temporary use permit number 2018.27.000821st Avenue, Todd and Wanda Holmes for a three-year term ending July 24th, 2021, and authorizes the CAO to issue the permits.
I'll move that.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. The next one is the temporary use permit for 1,000 Northeast Frontage Roads Crazy Horse Contracting, or as we know it, Crazy Cones. Motion reads that council receive the report to council temporary use permit 2018.296.0001008 Northeast Frontage Roads Crazy Horse Contracting Limited. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please?
I'll move the report.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. And then the next one, that council grant approval for the temporary use permit number 2018.296.0001008 Northeast Frontage Road Crazy Horse Contracting Limited for a three-year term ending July 24th, 2021, and authorizes the CAO to issue the permit.
I'll move that.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay. I'll call the question then. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. And the next one is on the development variance permit 2018.33.000135 Longsdale Street, McBride Evangelical Free Church. Motion reads that council receive the report. And I already said all the other stuff, so mover and a seconder?
I recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Green. You note at 7:57 that Council Green accused herself. So mover and a seconder?
Move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, Council Edwards. All in favor of receipts?
In favor.
Carried. The next one, motion reads that council approve the development permit and the development variance permit number 2018.33.000135 Longsdale Street Evangelical Free Church and authorizes the CAO to issue the permits.
I'll move that.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? There are none. Call the question. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Grab Council Green back? All right. So the next one is the council committees and community liaison appointments. Update changes include the removal of the BC Rural Advisory Committee, changing the delegate for the Robson Valley Regional Steering Committee to the CAO McCutcheon, and including Rick Thompson as alternate two for MIAVC. Administration is asking council to review any other changes.
The, Council Green? The Beetle Coalition was disbanded 2017.
Sorry, which one was that?
The, oh, there you go.
Okay. Let's try to find the change here. Okay. Council Thompson?
The Robson Valley Recreation Center Community Consultation Committee. I am not a delegate on that. That is Council Edwards. So that's removed.
Okay.
I was correcting the request, isn't it?
And the Northern Development Initiative Trust Committee, the Prince Director Regional Advisor Committee. I'm the delegate and Council Thompson is the chair on that, or the alternate, sorry. Any other changes for administration? Nope? Okay, is that good enough or didn't you even mention that?
Yeah. It looks like it was, the last time it was updated was September 12th of 2017. So thanks for those changes until today.
Okay. Thanks. Are we missing anything, councilors?
On this chart that we got with the package on page 86, I'm, I am on the Recreation Center.
It doesn't need to be corrected. It's listed twice.
It's listed twice. So we actually have the Robson Valley Recreation Center Committee. Yeah, so we've got two there. Did you see that?
There is a question.
Oh, yeah. So the one with Council...
I just brought it forward from 2017, so.
Okay. So the, Council Edwards is one, is correct. The Rick Thompson one needs to be removed. The Beetle Coalition disbanded. That Council Thompson down to NDIS. And I think that's, and add yourself in for the, with the other information, so I think that's it.
Yeah.
And do you need a motion for that or is that just good enough to give you direction?
I think that's just housekeeping.
Okay. All right. We also have another little housekeeping matter, Resolution 030328.17, acting mayor appointments. As Council Ruby serving as acting mayor from April 12th, 2018, to October 20th, 2018. After the 2018 municipal election, newly elected officials are not sworn until the inaugural meeting. So therefore, the acting mayor appointment from October 20th, 2018, needs to be extended until the swearing-in ceremony at the inaugural meeting and the date is not yet determined yet. So the motion reads that council extend the appointment of Council Ruby as acting mayor from October 21st, 2018, until the swearing-in of the newly elected officials for the new term at the inaugural meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Seconder?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nope. Call the question then. All in favor? Carried. And the next one is the building assessment report on 874 Third Avenue from Dean Schneider, our building fire inspector for the Village of McBride. Motion reads that council direct the village staff to send a letter by registered mail to the property owners, giving the property owners 30 days to apply for a permit to repair the structure and that failure to do so may result in council imposing remedial action. Mover and a seconder, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll do it.
Okay. Discussion? No questions from the minister? Did you have anything to add?
Yes.
Okay.
I have talked to the owner and have made them aware of the, of the situation. And just as a further follow-up with Dean with some of my questions, sorry, our building inspector, that he will be posting a notice on the building this week that states that the building cannot be occupied as per the building bylaw and it would require them to submit an engineer's report stating that the building is safe to occupy or what repairs are required to meet the provincial building codes. So they would have to comply with, ensure if they were going to be repairing, which they have indicated they wanted to, that's why the motion is, is at this point to repair, would have to be, submit to an engineer's report and that it was safe to occupy and meet provincial building code standards.
Thank you. Council Thompson, did you ever hand up?
I did, but it may have been a couple to this discussion. I'll throw it out and you can shut me down. We have a couple of others that have gone this route. Do we know what the status is of previous reports?
I've actually been working with a building inspector on that. Some of the reports were quite old. We're actually going to be following up with one at 210 Horseshoe Lake with the same posted notice and I will be bringing that back to council. It was from 2016, actually, when it first came to council. And once I have time to do a little bit more research on that one, it'll need to come back to council. They have not complied in any way, so remedial.
Okay.
And there's another one that we're working on too.
So we'll get a further report?
Exactly.
Thank you.
I have my hand up to you if someone could submit it.
Okay. Go ahead, Council Ruby.
Again, through the chair to the CAO. Do we have, I heard that you're working on a couple others. Do we have like a plan for the whole list of buildings that we have? Or we're just taking them one at a time?
Well, right now, it was important that we actually get some type of, this is the one here at 874 Third Avenue that has not come to council yet. Two of the other ones have come to council, they've just never been followed up on, so I'm just going to clean that up, but I need to, it takes more time to follow up on the ones that previous, the old ones versus something new on, on your plate.
Okay.
That your question, Council Ruby?
Mostly, but I, we'll follow up later. Give us one step at a time.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question then. All in favor? Carried?
In favor.
All right. So the next one is a motion that records for section 91C labor relations or other employee relations and I, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose and K negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of municipal service that are at their preliminary stages and that in the view of council could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public, council move to an in-camera meeting. Make a motion? Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. I'm sorry, I missed that, Council Ruby?
Again, favor.
Okay. The next one is a motion that the open meeting be recessed at 8:06 PM in order to conduct the closed in-camera meeting. Sure. Thank you. Seconder?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
See you, Roger. I actually got through that one quicker than what I thought, too.
You know that. I was waiting.
We have to have revised consolidated in-camera meeting.
Okay.
Agenda?
It's gonna be on my computer at the office.
Can I afford it to, do you have access to an email? A different email? Can you get it on your, on your cell phone?
I'm in McBride, BC, welcome into my cell phone. Sure, I could do that.